You're keeping everything up now, right?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Yep.
If so, that's probably because it's not better than you.
Yep. Okay. So let's go ahead.
Do we have to sign the consent?
No. I know nothing about any of your.
Me either. Tommy told me to answer her phone once and I couldn't even answer. Because you're supposed to swipe things.
Yeah.
And I just kept hitting it. I was like, I'm trying. She's like, just answer.
What did I do? All right.
How you doing?
Good now.
Good. Good to see you.
If you could all find a seat, we'll get moving very shortly. Please find your seat and we'll get prepared. Well, good evening and welcome to the 2023 Fayette County Commissioner Candidate Forum. I'm Connie Slampak. I'm currently the President of the Board of Directors of the Fayette County Chamber of Commerce. This is Fayette County's largest business advocacy and marketing organization with nearly 700 members throughout the county, and I think that's pretty impressive. By design and program, the Fayette Chamber acts as an apolitical organization with a dedication to work with our elected representation regardless of party affiliation. Having strong, experienced, capable, dedicated leaders is vital to our county and its growth. So events like this are one way that we can provide insight to our candidates' readiness for the position in our local government. Again, welcome and thank you, and enjoy the evening.
Good evening, everyone. It is wonderful to see so many people here tonight for our Fayette County Commissioners' Candidate Forum, and welcome to the audience who are joining us on either the Fayette Chamber's social media sites, Fayette County Television, and WMBS Radio. I am Devin White, and I am pleased to be here tonight moderating this important event. I would like to start by thanking our Commissioner candidates, who have all agreed to be here this evening to share their thoughts on why they should be your next County Commissioner for the next four years. These events are certainly stressful for the candidates, but vital to educating the voters about the role of being a Commissioner. To prepare for tonight's evening, a survey was distributed to the members of the Fayette Chamber of Commerce. Responses were requested regarding issues important to the community. Tonight's questions have been developed from that survey and will focus on the responsibilities of a County Commissioner. The questions will be asked of all the candidates, and each will have two minutes to respond. To cover the most topics, the candidates are asked to follow the rules for timekeeping. There is a timekeeper in the front row, who will visually show the 60-second mark and then the 90-second mark. At two minutes, a stop sign will be visible and a verbal time will be announced, and we'll play music probably, I'll say. It is imperative that we all follow the time format as presented. Now, we would like to remind the candidates and attendees that at the Fayette Chamber, we strongly adhere to the rules of public decorum. Therefore, we would ask that there is no verbal interaction from the audience or the other candidates during this event. No profanity, foul language, or verbal attacks on other candidates, friends, associates, or family will be tolerated. As a private organization hosting this event, we reserve the right to ask those who violate these rules to leave the event. Now, I'm not good at being the bad guy, so let's get a little lighter. We'll start tonight, allowing each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves and talk a little about their platform. The order for the questions will change throughout the evening, so that each candidate will have the opportunity to speak first. But for the introduction, we'll simply go in alphabetical order according to last name. So, that leaves us with, starting with our first current Commissioner, Scott Dunn. If you could head to the podium.
Thank you, Devin. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to everybody who took their time out of their day to attend here and everybody watching, either online or on local TV. I want to give you a background of who I am. If you don't know, my name is Scott Dunn. I am currently your Fayette County Commissioner, born and raised in Fayette County, 1983 graduate of Uniontown High School, Go Raiders, and a 1988 graduate of Robert Morris College. My business background is in commercial banking, manufacturing, and steel, and then I owned my own transportation company for 15 years. That's prior to leading up to being Commissioner. All of that has played in my ability to be a Commissioner. I lean on all of that experience as in my previous career, every day as Commissioner. I've also was the Borough Council President in the Borough of Dunbar since, from 2011 until I took the Commissioner's seat in 2019. Again, the background of local government, business, all plays. I also am the father, married 28 years to Michelle, father of three. One of my daughters, my daughter is in St. Augustine, Florida. That breaks my heart. I want kids to stay here in Fayette County. That's one of my goals. The three things I'm working on every day, other than a government that is transparent to the people and accountable to the people, is to build infrastructure, build housing, build tourism, and all the things that we need to build Fayette County's present and the future. You're going to hear about a bloated budget today. Guess what? We've actually, you'll hear about that later. I got the stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Gino Gallo.
First off, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this night, so everyone could get to know about the candidates. My name's Gino Gallo, and I'm from Connelsville, Pennsylvania. Lived there all my life. I'm 54 years old. My background is in the tourism industry. For about a decade, I owned the Rivers Edge Family Campground, which has been sold and is now the Uniontown KOA. I've had other business ventures in my life. I own Trailside Design and Contracting, and also Fayette Structures, which we sell pre-built buildings and garages. And I've worked as a contractor for most of my life. For a brief period, I worked in the County Commissioners Unit, under Commissioners Al Ambrosini and Commissioner Zabatowski and Angela Zimmerlink. During that time, I helped work on two budgets. What brought me to this was a concern. I have two grandsons, one just turned 10, and as I look around at the county, I don't like what I'm seeing. I see some good things, and I see a lot of things that haven't changed. A lot of the same old, same old. I believe I have a unique skill set that I can bring to the Commissioners' office, and I think I can help turn some of these things around. At this time in my life, it's probably not the best time to do this from a business perspective. My accountant is losing his mind right now. But I just felt it was time. I feel compelled to do this. I made the decision, I owe my wife, beautiful wife, that we would stay here. We have roots here, and we want to see things better. That's why I'm running.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Next up, we will hear from Commissioner David Lore.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to be here, and it's another great day in Fayette County. It's always a great day in Fayette County, no matter what it is and what's going on outside, it's still a great day. As you know, my name is Dave Lore. I'm from Connelsville. I am a solid Christian. I've gone to the Christian missionary lines in Connelsville pretty much my whole life. I always said my parents had me there a week after I was born. I graduated from high school in 1975, went to Penn State Fayette Campus, and also Asbury Bible College. I graduated from, naturally, from high school at Connelsville in 1975, and then I ended up in the Navy. And when I was in the service, it was from 1981 to 1985. I come out of there and started my own business, and that was in the assurances and investments, and still do that. I'm not just a County Commissioner. I spend a lot of time, and a lot of people look at me and say, "You must work a lot of hours." I do. Working in my family is one of those very prominent things that we do. We work long days and long hours, but we also have a good time when we are together with family. My wife is Gretchen Killiger-Lore, and she is from Everson. And my father and my mother are both deceased, Alice and Homer Rodney. And then my sister is Linda, married to Dana Wood. So, yeah, I've been a Commissioner. This is my second term, finishing up my second term. There are projects on the table. When my wife and I talked about me running again, she said, "Do you have your projects finished?" And I said, "Probably not." And I do have other projects that you will hear in the next few minutes about budgeting, or throughout the budgeting, and also increasing the infrastructure. And I'm going to try hard in the next four years to successfully do them. As in the last four years, two times I campaigned on building a new county jail, and I did it. Along with the Commissioners Board, we were successful in doing that, and it was under budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lore. And finally, Commissioner Vince Vasides.
I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for having this event. I think it's wonderful that we can express our views to the people of Fayette County. I'm Vince Vasides. I'm a County Commissioner from South Union Township, and I'm seeking another term in the November 7th general election. I'm running a positive campaign. I always have done that. You know, I've worked on numerous projects to maximize the county's long-term growth and development, now and in the future. I've always focused on creating more jobs, focused on workforce development, to get those people into the jobs of the future, and one of my top priorities is to increase the county's population. I think it's stabilized. We're setting initiatives and policies that will increase the population in future years. I want to use my 24 years of experience and my education. I have a master's degree, which I'm very proud of, and the working relationships I've developed with the Governor and our United States Senators. I feel I can bring federal and state dollars, even to a greater degree, as I have in the past. And I think I have a record of achievement, economic growth, job creation and retention, infrastructure development, broadband expansion, business park expansion. We purchased a recycling program and revamped that program where it's one of the best in the state. Maximized tourism promotion. We're building the Sheepskin Trail. We've enhanced public transportation. We've completed a new county prison. And all that while having on a day-to-day responsibility of managing over 600 employees. I've done 24 budgets, and the county is fiscally sound. I am currently the Secretary Treasurer of the SPC. I'll be Chairman in two years. And I believe I'm the best candidate to lead Fayette County into the future with my experience, leadership, and dedication, and I'd appreciate your vote and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vasides. So let's start with our first question. As far as how we're going to do the order, we're going to rotate. So first up will be Mr. Gino Gallo. We'll go down the table and then make our way back. Gino, I can read the question for you. "We're going to start broad and focus on growth, as was mentioned in many of your introductions. So the primary duty of a County Commissioner is to create and implement policy. If elected, what policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage growth in the county? And what are your priorities for the first six months of your term?"
Okay. Well, growth is definitely something that we have to focus on. The reality is that our population's been declining, and it continues to decline. That creates a lot of other problems. You know, fundamentally, one of the biggest problems in our county is poverty, and that poverty chases out the best and brightest. That poverty is a weight on everything that happens and every kind of development that we try to do. And I believe the first and foremost job of a County Commissioner is to control that budget. And I'm very concerned about the spending that happened in the last 36 months, the purchases we've made. You know, the state mandates that we not run a deficit in the county, and that oftentimes forces a tax increase, but what really forces that tax increase is the way money is budgeted. We've expanded the size of our government in the last 36 months, just in our office space, with the purchase, not the purchase, with the acquisition of the Gallatin Bank Building and the money that's been dumped into that, the acquisition of Wagner's Ferentz Building next to the courthouse. That was about just under $500,000, and then over a million dollars was spent to connect that to the courthouse. Then two buildings behind there were purchased. And it's not necessarily the amount of these purchases, the fact that we now own these buildings, and we have to maintain staff, buy soap for the floors, we have to heat and cool and staff them. All that puts a burden back onto the taxpayers. The first thing that the county has to do is keep its spending under control, keep its taxes low, so that growth can happen organically. And the best way for that growth to happen is by taking care of people. We need to get more homes. We need to get more ownership. We need to really fight the war on poverty. And a rising tide will raise all ships, and if we do that, the growth will come. First, we have to take care of our own, and we can't leave anyone behind. I feel like that's what's been happening in this county for the last couple of decades.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Up next, we'll have Commissioner Loer.
Would you repeat the question for me, please?
Absolutely. The primary duty of a county commissioner is to create and implement policy. If elected, what policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage growth in the county? And what are your priorities for the first six months of your term?
Okay. First off, as far as the implementing policy, when I came into office almost eight years ago, one of the biggest issues we had was the overspending issues, and that there were companies that had not been paid for services rendered. And as, we even talked about this earlier today, the one thing that we did implement is we implemented tighter spending to make sure that the budget was within standings and where it was supposed to be. And people got paid. The businesses got paid. They were actually put, we have turned payments around within 30 days, and actually even less. In fact, with the new county jail, the contractors and everyone that's been involved in that has been very, very pleased with the way we have handled everything dealing with that new county jail with paying the bills. We've kept people on site. We have always had something going on to make sure that they are getting paid. The other thing that we did implement in the past was win COVID. And one of those things with COVID is that we were on the job all the time, making sure that people were being taken care of and that the safety was out there for them. With the help of the Chamber and many other sources, we were able to put the SHOT program together at the mall, and just different implementations. We are, I am very good at making sure things get done. The one thing about it is, when it's actually happening, you have to actually come to the table and figure out how to make it happen. We can stand here, anyone can stand here and say what they would do, but what I've done in the last seven years plus is we've put it into gear, we've made things happen, we've kept into budget, we've actually made things happen in the county as far as even like the bike trail. And one big thing is the broadband that we already started to do, and we're looking to finish accomplishing that. As a commissioner, I will continue to work hard on broadband and make things happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Loer. Commissioner Vasides.
Well, you know, the question is policy. The first thing that a county commissioner does is their budget every year. And there's been so much misinformation regarding this the last month, it really bothers me. So I'm going to set the record straight. Here's a printout of all of our county departments. Right now, at that snapshot in time, there were, it was three-fourths of the year, that's 75%. Our budget right now in the county is at 62%. So we're well under in our spending. I think what's happening here is the water's getting muddied with the fact that we have all this American Rescue Act money, and we had COVID CARES Act money that we had to spend by a certain date or it went back to the federal government. Well, we don't want to send a dime back to the federal government. We want to invest that in Fayette County, and that's what we've done. We've given money to fire departments, we've given money for infrastructure, we've given money for broadband, and with the lost revenue that we've had, we have decided to invest in our courthouse and do some buildings and upgrade our campus in the county, which was long overdue. And we've done that, and, you know, we won't be sending any money back, and we've invested in the future of the county. We've also worked hard on other things in the county, you know, our zoning ordinances policy, our land use plan is policy. And those ordinances and plans, which are policy, are geared towards long-term growth and development of the county. And we're getting that. The county is growing. I've never seen so many construction projects in Fayette County that there is right now. There's at least 20 buildings going up all over the county, maybe more. So Fayette County is on the move.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I think the policies we have are working. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vasides. Commissioner Dunn.
And to follow up on the budget issue, when you receive money from the federal government or state government or any government, any funding source, that adds to your revenue. That funding source has a designated expense that increases your revenues and it increases your expense. That's money in and money out. That's why our budget has gone up. But that is all special revenues and special projects. And I can go through the projects that we have, but that's not the question. You know, my focus is going to be on building infrastructure. And what infrastructure means to me is not only water and sewage, but broadband and energy in Fayette County. We now sit on hundreds of years of Marcella shale, and under that is thousands of years of Utica. So we are working right now with the likes of EQT, Columbia Gas, and West Penn Power to see how we can boost energy. There is a need for more energy in Fayette County. We have companies ready to invest in Fayette County right now if they had more energy. I plan on focusing, I never want to have a government or an economy focused on one thing like we had in the past. I'm going to focus on healthcare, energy, education, agriculture, manufacturing, and tourism. And not just promoting tourism, but building tourism assets. I am the only commissioner that has a formal 15-point plan to reduce poverty, and that includes increasing education and training, new programs like One Voice, One Community, new programs to address addiction in Fayette County, mental health and physical health. I am leaving no stone unturned to make Fayette County a better place to live and play. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. We're going to rearrange your questions a little bit because we seem to have a theme here with the budget. So let's get the budget talk out of the way a little bit before we move on. A second, very important duty of county commissioners is to construct, approve, and implement a county budget. In terms of the budget, what are your priorities? What do you or would you take into consideration in creating a solid, responsible budget for Fayette?
Well, what I've done since being the commissioner is watch that budget tightly. And we have meetings every month with all of our department heads. And we are consistently saying, "Watch that budget. Cut the spending." We do want to cut the spending. We want to make sure that the budget stays within what we set up. By the end of the year, at this point right now, a lot of the spending has been pulled way back, and there's no such thing as being able to just use the money that's in the budget to pay out. Because we have very strong watchdogs in the process to make sure that wasteful spending is not taking place. So in the budget itself, we have not raised taxes except for one thing, and that is for the county jail. We warned people. We knew we were going to have to do that. But with that, because of budgeting and because of watching what takes place with the finances, when I first come into office in 2016, not long after that, we got a really, really bad letter that said that we were going to lose all of our state and federal funding across the board. And when I say "all," I'm talking about anything that came from the state. We made sure that we got everything arranged and fixed in, and then we started building our bond rating so that we could actually get better rates for everything, which actually rolls back into the county jail. We have a 30-year loan through the USDA at 2.25% interest. That helps us so that we don't have to increase budgets for reasons such as projects. All the projects that are taking place have actually been paid for. They're not on a payment plan. They're actually out there and being done, except for the jail, the county jail. So I've actually worked hard to make sure that the budget stays within reins, and also to make sure there's not wasteful spending. We can't afford wasteful spending, especially when we look at all the different cost factors dealing with cost of living. And we have to watch our side to make sure that we do not add to your burden of cost of spending.
Thank you, Commissioner Loer. Commissioner Vasides.
As David said, our bond rating is up. That was why we were able to get such a great loan opportunity with the USDA, 2.25%. If we'd have had to go with a traditional bond issue, it would have cost us another $25 million. I had had that costed out with a bond person, and they said that that was the greatest loan they've ever seen for such a huge project. That loan was up to 51 million. We did not spend 51 million. We spent, the projected cost was 44 million, and we're about $1.5 million under budget for that prison. We're not over budget by any means. As I had said earlier, we're at 62% of our budget. It can go up to 75% at this point in the year. But everybody, every department I checked was well under the 75%, which is hats off to our department heads in our row offices. We have to put, and under Gatsby accounting, that's governmental accounting, that changed in the last several years, we have to put all the state and federal funds that we're using for capital projects in the budget. Also, grants, we have to put in the budget. So when you see these nice charts that show how much our budget has shot up, that's because they changed the governmental accounting principles, and all those things have to be put in there now. Our biggest problem with the budget is because of the state budget not being passed, our reimbursement of funds for children and youth and other state and federal funds is way behind. Last time I checked recently, we were owed $5 million. So that does hurt our cash flow. But we're working through that and doing everything we can to recoup those funds. But probably, it won't speed up until after the budget is passed, and that has not been passed yet. So we're doing everything we can to cut costs, monitor the costs, and it's been my mantra since I've been a county commissioner, is to watch the budget, and I have done so.
Okay. Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Devin. I think I have to correct Commissioner Loer. I thought it was 2.15%, but that's even better. So to the current budget, we get a Controller's Report every month at our meeting. It's presented, it's part of the public record. We are actually, we have actually spent $1 million less this year than we had spent in last year's budget. So every month, we do meet with our department heads, we make sure that they are not wasteful spending on things. And I'm a big believer, as we budget, every year, it's no new people, no new equipment or no new cars unless this stuff is grant funded. So that's part of the budgeting process, though, is to find out where this grant money is. We leave no stone unturned to find out where this grant money is. When it comes to the budget, the most expensive thing to the Fayette County budget is people, salaries, benefits, and retirement. There's no way around it. So we have done everything we can. We are in the middle of inflation, just like every other company is in Fayette County, just like every other company in the county. We've had to learn to compete for our employees. That has meant giving people raises in some cases. And it's difficult to do. It's, you always have to be leery of what's going to happen to the budget when you give somebody a raise. But we have to mandate, we have to provide mandated services to our citizens. And so as part of doing that, we have to employ a competent staff, a competent and staff that is paid commensurate to their services. So it's a very difficult thing. It's something that I take very seriously. It's transparent, and again, I...
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Mr. Gallo.
You know, you don't want to come across as negative, but I do think we have to live in a certain reality. When you double the floor space of the administrative offices of this courthouse and the amount of space it takes to run the buildings, adding that Gallatin Bank Building is a white elephant, we're still only on three floors. That building was abandoned for 10 years, and now we're trying to resurrect it. That is a legacy of spending that will plague taxpayers for years to come. That is legacy taxation. The individual department heads do do a great job of keeping their departments in line. But the spending that is going to be a plague on us is this expansion of government. You cannot double the square footage and add buildings and expect that the cost to heat them, maintain them, insure them, and staff them isn't going to go up. The population of Fayette County has been shrinking since the day I was born. There's no signs that there's going to be great growth or job creation. Every job that gets created, you've just got to focus in reality here, folks. And I think that that's not happening now. You can't take on a white elephant like the Gallatin Bank Building and heat it and cool it. The individual department heads will do their best to keep in line. But, you know, you've got heating, you've got cooling, you've got insurance. And that's the fundamental problem here. It's not the individual department heads, it's the group think of the commissioners that think that we can go on this expansion of government, whether that's grant money or not. Grant money is not going to pay to keep the lights on. It's not going to pay for the janitors or the staff or the extra security we're going to need. We need to right-size our government. And this may sound strange for a Democrat to be talking like this, but we can't tax our way to prosperity, and that's what's happening. And make no means about, they're going to have to increase taxes. Mark my words, there'll be at least a half a mil increase next year. It's going to happen. Because you can't go on with this broad-based spending, you know, there's a cause and effect to everything. Now, you can move the money around and move grants around, but the reality is the reality.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Okay, let's switch gears a bit. According to the Pennsylvania Department of Labor, the leading industry for employment in Fayette County is healthcare, accounting for 19.9 or nearly 1 in 5 of every job. At WVU Medicine Union Town Hospital, there are 135 current openings as of today. Many of our industries show the same kind of need with current openings countywide, over 1,500. How will you, as a commissioner, work to help tackle the shortage of skilled workers to ensure that our business community can grow? Mr., Commissioner Vasides, you're up first.
I won't get into the Gallatin Bank Building, but just one thought, by acquiring that building, we save $60,000 a year in our budget, eliminating parking fees for parking in the city parking garage. So that was a huge savings right there. And that building has got a lot of promise for the future, and we'll be able to make public-private partnerships there to help, you know, get businesses in there. We already have some proposals into the Governor's Action Team for that. But getting back to your point, healthcare is growing. It's become a regional healthcare destination in Fayette County. And one thing we've done in the last year or so is we partnered handling all the financial aspects of that, which is in our budget, another grant. But the ARC awarded a grant to the CTI, the Fayette CTI, for healthcare training. And we're hoping they can get that up and running and, you know, get people trained for medical-related jobs and the jobs of the future. That's a good project, and we were glad to help out. We endorsed their application with the Appalachian Regional Commission, and they did get the award. I believe it's a couple million dollars. And that will build their facility and hopefully train many people in the healthcare industry. But the answer is workforce development. We are really focused on workforce development in the county. Commissioners are always, you know, monthly attend the meetings. We interact with them on a regular basis. We have to train our people for the current jobs that are open, which are about 1,500 jobs open right now in the county. We have to train them for those jobs and fill them, and also train them for the jobs of the future. So with economic development, workforce development's going to be the focus for Fayette County in the future, and I'm committed to doing whatever it takes to get these... And I'm committed to doing whatever it takes to get these jobs filled and train people for the future.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn.
So healthcare is one of the six industries that I believe will help turn Fayette County around, starting with the purchase of the Uniontown Hospital by WVU Medicine. Not only is there now a cancer center there, they're working to bring back their birthing center. You will see, when we initially talked to the CEO of, who's no longer the CEO, but the original CEO from WVU, they come in and they will, they're going to bring more healthcare entities to the county. It's going to be, they're going to work in conjunction with Morgantown. And so you may go to Morgantown for something, you may go to Uniontown for something, then maybe they come here. So it's exciting to hear their plans. We also have, just recently on Sunday, the grand opening of Exela Health, which is now Independent Health Systems in Connelsville. Penn Highlands bought Highlands Hospital in Connelsville. Allegheny Health Network is building a facility in South Union Township. Montgomery Medical building a new facility in George's Township. So what has to happen? We have to educate and we have to train our people for these jobs. So, starting with the building that we're in, Penn State Fayette, you can get a four-year nursing degree in Fayette County right here. You can also go to LBI. You can also go to Fayette CTI. And again, they got a $1.5 million grant, which is in our budget, that grants its income and its expense. So the other thing too is that these entities are now working with some of the entities that are going to navigate our children towards more education. Entities like One Voice One Community, WVU Medicine is working with them directly. The Verticals Program by Will James in Brownsville. The East and the United Community Center. It has to be all hands on deck.
Thank you Commissioner Dunn. Mr. Gallo. What's that? Oh, absolutely. So the question, many facts upfront, one in five jobs, healthcare, currently 1,500 jobs open in Fayette County. The question is, how will you, as a commissioner, work to help tackle the shortage of skilled workers to ensure that our business community can grow?
Well, that's a real tough one. So we have more jobs than people. And we also have another problem with the Amazon Fulfillment Center that's about to open up. They're going to strip about 1,500 jobs more out of our workforce. And they've identified that. That's why they located where they did. That's part of their plan. We've got to get people to stay that are here. Our best and brightest keep leaving. I think the best way we do that too is by addressing poverty head-on. We've got to create opportunities for homeownership. Currently only about 50% of the people in the county own their own home. These neighborhoods are much better served when people own their own homes. That's a better neighborhood. So I can testify to this. I was the vice chair of the Connelsville Area Property Owners Association for about a decade. That's primarily landlords. Most of the memberships didn't want to be landlords, they just wanted to protect their neighborhood, so they bought the house next to them. That's how I became a landlord. Me and my wife have two houses that way. We wanted to protect our neighborhood. All the subsidies that were given to these companies, these need to be given to individuals. I just was, talked to some folks from Mason Town today that have approached the commissioners in the past about a LERTA-type program, a tax abatement program for individuals. And it fell on deaf ears. But that's something that I'm going to make a big part of my platform. We've got to get people in homes, we've got to take care of our own. Then they'll stay, we can fill these jobs, we're going to attract more people if that's the atmosphere we have. Right now we have a bad name. We can't fill jobs. How many people have their favorite mom and pop restaurants closed two, three days a week because they can't get labor? Connelsville Subway, at the Connelsville Walmart, several times a week, they're not open because labor doesn't show up. Can you imagine, as a businessman, I can't imagine having that investment in a business and you just can't get labor. Labor runs the day. That's good for wages and things like that, but the reality is we've got to get people here, we've got to get them to stay. All the economic development has to be focused more on individuals.
Thank you Mr. Gallo. And Commissioner Lore.
If you will repeat that for me one more time, please.
Yes, absolutely. So again, one in five jobs in our county are healthcare. And we currently have 1,500 openings in the county, just at the hospital, we're looking at 135 openings. How will you, as a commissioner, work to help tackle the shortage of skilled workers to ensure that our business community can grow?
Commissioner Dunn kind of took all the notes I was taking. He hit me with all of them, except for a couple little things. One in particular is that here at Fayette Campus, there are scholarship programs that are actually very favorable toward residents here in the county. So that's one area in particular along with, setting beside with that four-year degree for nursing and then other health issues or health programs along with that. So those are very, very important for us to pay attention to, especially since WVU, Highlands Hospital now slash Penn Highlands, Allegheny Healthcare Network, Exela Health, and I mean, we are becoming, and UPMC is still here too. So, you know, you have all these health networks that are here that are all having the same problem. And that, I'm going to lead into this. We are not the only county that's got this problem. The whole country's got this problem. Go from here to Virginia Beach, go from here to Florida, go from here to New Hampshire and Maine, and you're going to see the same thing. Help Wanted signs everywhere. And because of that, everyone's got the same issue. It's not just us. So I'm tired of people saying it's just us. Our county is a great county. Now, the area in particular that I want to work on strongly is getting houses built. We do have a shortage of houses. I've been working for two years trying to find a house for my brother-in-law and sister-in-law to move back here that are looking for around 150,000. That's impossible. I will tell you, that's impossible. But housing that these executives, these young executives and these different ones are looking for are usually starting around 2 to 250 and up. We are working, I want to work hard to actually make sure housing is available because I know a lot of people, they come to me almost daily, asking if I know where there's a house for $250,000. No. Because even the ones that are online being built are already on a waiting list. That's one of the biggest issues. Now, I know that the health issues are here and the employee issues are here, but if we can actually draw up by housing, that's going to be huge to actually help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Lore. So our next question, there are certainly projects around us. Notably talked about much tonight would be the new jail. We also see projects happening every day around us in other areas, substantial projects. Take the Hydrogen Hub, for example. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county? Where will you focus your energy? Commissioner Scott Dunn, we are back to you.
Infrastructure is certainly one of the areas that I focus on a lot. And again, I mentioned water, sewage, broadband, and energy. Right now, we met with the Pennsylvania Manufacturers Association. And they said, one of the things that everybody is looking for is power. Power generated on-site. Power generated with resiliency that they can control on-site, not coming from miles away, not coming from, you know, transmission lines or anything like that. And that power comes from what's called a microgrid. And that's where natural gas is turned into a turbine. And the turbine produces electricity on-site just for that company. So that is something that we have the ability to do here in Fayette County. Not only from the transmission lines of Columbia Gas and People's Gas and some of those other companies, but with companies like EQT that have the ability to drill wells and pads on-site. So that's one of the things that is very promising for Fayette County. The water, everybody deserves clean water. And as we talk about housing, there are pockets of Fayette County that don't have clean water. There are pockets of Fayette County where people don't wash their clothes because the water is so rich in iron. So you have to provide, imagine buying a $400,000 house in Deer Lake and saying, oh, by the way, the laundromat's two blocks down on the right. It's not a selling point for Fayette County. Everybody deserves clean water. That's what we're doing right now. I'm working with National Pike Water up on the mountain. We've worked with Albury Gallatin. We work with North Fayette on a regular basis to improve water quality in Fayette County.
Thank you Commissioner Dunn. Mr. Gallo.
In a word, infrastructure. You know, connecting people with services and the things they need to exist, it's a big deal. It's a loaded phrase. What we really need is smart infrastructure. We've got cities that are crumbling and neighborhoods, high-density areas. That's where we need to focus our rebuilding of our infrastructure and that's where we need our development to be. The last thing we need is to do these expensive infrastructure projects where we're reaching out and destroying good ag land. It's actually the return on the investment of infrastructure is low. It's low to the community. So from a county standpoint, I think we need to focus on smart infrastructure developments. Some of the things I'm concerned about most is this big broadband expansion. You know, I have at my house, I'm lucky, I have Armstrong Cable. We have high fiber optic lines right to the house. We have very fast internet. About six months ago, I also, for an outbuilding, I bought Verizon Cube. Now, I live down in the dip, along the bike trail, there's a trestle behind me, and we don't have good, sometimes good cell reception. But that cube works fantastically. So in our outbuilding, I get just as fast upload and download speeds as I do off of the infrastructure that Armstrong has put in. I'm afraid by the time we get to infrastructure, the broadband services in place, that's going to be replaced. Conventional wisdom is now with artificial intelligence, these new cubes and things like Starlink, that's going to be, that's going to be the future. So any kind of infrastructure we do has to be smart, it has to make sense for the long term, and there has to be a payback. We can't just keep spending money on development and ideas that don't have a real payback for the people. Again, if we focus on the people that are here, the people that live, that's a plan based in reality, that'll get us the best results. I don't like rolling the dice on a lot of things. Right now, it's an emergency. I mean, look at our population loss. We just need to do a change of direction.
Thank you Mr. Gallo. Commissioner Lore.
Infrastructure, huge, huge, huge factor. It's been a subject for a long, long time in the county. And we, as the county board, is, one of the things in particular that I ran into a few years ago is that a gentleman talked about a program called the Infrastructure Bank. We actually put together an infrastructure bank in this county. We've already had two rounds of it. One was an $8 million first round of monies that were actually directed toward municipalities and authorities for infrastructure buildup. So what they're doing is they're taking what they currently have and building off of that to actually produce areas to make sure that other areas do have coverage, such as water, such as sewage, the things that they need to do. This is something that was put together in this term that I highly support because it gives the municipalities the ability to expand their infrastructure. Now, the way this also works is because it comes from the commissioners board, that this infrastructure money can be their match money. Many times, infrastructure doesn't get done because match money is needed. Sometimes a dollar for dollar. So if they want to borrow a million, if they need a million dollars for the project, they have to somehow get a million dollars to match it. That million dollars can come through our infrastructure bank and we've already had municipalities doing that. The other thing about broadband, broadband is an extremely expensive activity to take place. The broadband per mile in some situations is $35,000 a mile. Now, that is, that to me is ridiculous, by the way. But at the same time, broadband is something that our grants are coming out. We've already done one grant. We used COVID monies in 2020, or 1920, to actually run broadband and run hotspots to the ends of places such as Gibbons Glade up on top of the mountain a half a mile away. And since then, that same company, Q Call Vital Link, has actually come back and hooked up 67 houses for broadband purposes with fiber optic, with the capabilities of one up and one down, which is a full gig of service, which is quick.
Thank you Commissioner Lore.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Vassides.
I've worked hard on infrastructure my entire career. Fayette County with the Monfate Expressway has a billion dollars worth of highway through it, from the West Virginia line all the way to the Washington County line near Fredericktown. We got a billion dollars worth of highway because we worked hard to get it as a team and I was part of that team. We also, during my tenure, we've been able to acquire, I've kept track of it, $200 million in economic development and infrastructure projects during my tenure. So I'm proud of that. I saw an opportunity last year with the Infrastructure Act being put through the legislative, the federal legislature. I sought, it's not a paying job, but I sought the SPC, a leadership position, an SPC. That's the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission. That's a metropolitan planning organization for the region made up of county commissioners in 10 counties and the city of Pittsburgh as mayor. And I was elected secretary treasurer by my colleagues. And at the end of the year, I'll be vice chair and in two years, I'll be chairman of that commission. There's going to be $5 billion, not million, billion dollars flowing through that organization in the next five years. And I will make sure that Fayette County gets their fair share, if not more, of the money. I look for those, you know, those opportunities every meeting and we're going to do everything we can to get as much infrastructure in here. We have the Infrastructure Bank. We have our broadband plan, which is very ambitious. We've already invested 10 million there. We're going to hopefully get another 10 million from the state next year and 10 million the following year from the federal government. We'll have our broadband network out there of the top-notch fiber that's available out there. Broadband will be available to everybody in Fayette County and that is the infrastructure of the future. Thank you.
Okay, our next question. AARP's Liveability Index measures how well a community is meeting the current and future needs of its people, regardless of age, physical ability, or ethnicity. The Liveability Index ranks areas on seven different categories. Housing, neighborhood, transportation, environment, health, engagement, and opportunity. This scale produces an overall score on a scale of 0 to 100, in which a higher number represents greater livability. Fayette County has a score of 48. Low overall, and especially low in the areas of neighborhood and health. If elected, how will you approach and assist with the overall health and wellness of our communities? If elected, how will you approach and assist with the overall health and wellness of our communities? Mr. Gallo, you're up first.
Well, one of our biggest industries in our county is agriculture. And that's where we're going to, that's where we're going to find the solution to that problem. What we need are real farm-to-table initiatives. There are some out there now, they're great, but they're not enough. You know, we subsidize these big companies on a grand scale. We even went so far, we have an industrial park with a spec building in it that we don't have a tenant for yet. That's a big, that's a big outlay of cash. We need to do more with our farmers, we need more market farmers. We need to connect those. We have food deserts throughout the county. The mom and pop store, that air is gone. Now we have dollar stores. We need initiatives where we put fresh food in the hands of Fayette County people that they're fed by Fayette County farmers. That's what we need. Those are the kind of operations we need to encourage and we need to subsidize. You know, it's a shame that we are on the bottom of every, we're on the top of every bad list and we're on the bottom of every good list. Again, that goes back to poverty. That's our war here. We have to take care of the people that are here. We lift the people that are here up, we take care of the people that are here, other people will come. That's how we'll fix the problems. It's a tough, it's a tough road to hoe, but there's got to be a lot of education. And we, the key is, this is because of the poverty that exists here. If we keep doing the same things that we've always done, some of this economic development, it's like a Ponzi scheme. We create jobs here, we create jobs there. But folks, the census has told us that we're losing population. The quality of life has gone down. The ARP study shows it. So what we got to do is we, we can't, don't want to be negative, but we got to be realistic. Fayette County hasn't been moving forward. It hasn't moved forward in the last 30 years. Yes, there are some good initiatives and things that can be built on. years. Yes, there are some good initiatives and things that can be built on. That Infrastructure Bank is a fantastic program, I'm glad we adopted it. We have to build on it, and we have to expand it, we have to create opportunities for homeownership. That's where families make wealth. When a family owns their own home, that's their, that's their ticket out of poverty, that along with education and opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Commissioner Lohr.
I'm going to make you repeat that long question.
So, I'll repeat the last part of it. So, Fayette County has a score of forty-eight overall, low overall, and especially low in the areas of neighborhood and health. If elected, how will you approach and assist with the overall health and wellness of our communities?
Okay. Well, health is an issue across the board, no matter which way we look at it, whether it be forty-eight, or whether it be seventy-five, or eighty, it's still, people need healthy bodies to actually have healthy lives. The one thing that we did in particular that I was really pushing on because of my past history of selling health insurance for a long, long time, since I left the service, is that I knew the need for issues dealing with diabetes. And what we did in our county level with our county employees is that we actually have a program built in for our county employees that have diabetes, that are diabetic, to have programs to actually make them healthy and to keep track of everything going on. This is something that I've worked on even with Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, to try to indoctrinate a program into the county for everyday citizens also. Something that would actually help them have a better life, watch their diabetes, try to stay within check, and have a healthier life. As far as the neighborhoods go, yeah, it's tough. And, and once again, you know, some of these questions, when people leave and live in our county, are sometimes the worst for our county. When I say it that way, I'm actually talking about, we live here, we see all the garbage. The only thing that we can continue to do is keep on working hard to try to clean up the county, especially in the drug issue. You know, we have a drug task force, we have different areas that try to help our communities to be safe. We have good police forces. I was just a week and a half, two weeks ago, down in Brownsville to honor the three officers that are down there, because those, those men and women take their lives in their hand every day to try to make people safe. Is it going to help overall? Absolutely. But, it's a long process, and the population reduction, that's across the board. Really, our population has leveled off. It hasn't been, it's not going down, it's actually been leveled. And as long as we keep on doing what we're doing, on the trail that we're going, I will tell you that I firmly believe that we will have people coming here. I talk to people daily that have just moved here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohr. Commissioner Vasides.
There are initiatives out there that we're working on for health and wellness, and one of them is through the Chamber, it's the Fayette Living Well Coalition. And they are doing walks every month, they're providing information to help people live more healthy lives. That continues to grow, we need to continue to focus on that and make that bigger each year, and try, really try to stay ahead of the curve. Another thing that I think we need to find a way to implement, we've done all of the development of it, it's ready to go, we just have to get some sponsors and make sure this happens, is the Blue Zones. The Blue Zones is a perfect model program that would fit Fayette County's needs to improve our health and well-being in the county. And I believe Blue Zones could be the answer to really turning around Fayette County. So, I'm very supportive of trying to find a way to get that off the ground. The program is started, we just need to implement. We've done some other things. We have a health and wellness program in the county for our county employees, and we give them incentives to try to stay healthy and do healthy, to have a healthier lifestyle. And, you know, I think our recreation efforts with the Sheepskin Trail have got to be helping, with people getting more exercise than ever and utilizing our trails in the county. We have to continue to build our recreational opportunities to give people a chance to exercise and have a healthier lifestyle. But, I think the Blue Zones could be the answer for Fayette County and expansion of the Living Well Coalition.
Thank you, Commissioner Vasides. And Commissioner Dunn.
Just to clear the air, the spec building is not a Fayette County project, that was built by Fayette Pen. And, right now, we are working with state and the county farm bureau to build a comprehensive bi-local program, which will be either a website, Facebook page, or an app that will connect consumers, stores, and restaurants with our local farms and dairies. So, that's something going on right now. The biggest problem, I was asked, what's the biggest problem yesterday in Fayette County, and I said it's generational poverty. And it affects everything that we do. Poverty affects crime, crime, blight, unemployment, workforce, hunger, addiction, domestic violence, and every other social ill that we have. The poverty rate in Fayette County right now is about sixteen and a half percent. If you're a college grad or have trade training, that, your poverty rate is about three-point-four-nine percent. If you dropped out of high school, it's about thirty-five percent. And, one of the things that I'm most embarrassed about is the African-American population in the city of Uniontown has about a forty-two percent poverty rate. So, there's a direct correlation between poverty and post-secondary education and training. The more educated and trained you are, the less likely you are to live in poverty, and the more likely you are to be employed in our workforce. To that end, we need to boost education and training, I've been doing that. The county reached a memorandum of understanding with Salem University to bring them here in an online facility. We need to navigate our students toward education, that's where One Voice One Community verticals, East and United Community Center, the YMCA. We are working with all those organizations. With addiction, working with Fayette County Drug and Alcohol, we have put significant programs in place for treatment at our jail, with our homeless population, and with people in current addiction, in active addiction. So, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing, and we have a lot more work to do.
Okay. Timekeepers, we're good for one last question? Okay, so, we're going to do that one last question before closing remarks. Though maybe the broadest, this might be the most difficult question. What made you decide to run for Fayette County Commissioner? And what do you consider the biggest challenge of the position? Commissioner Lohr.
I started this road a long time ago. Anyone who knows my history is that I started back in nineteen ninety-five to run for county commissioner. I decided to run in nineteen ninety-five because I felt I had something to offer. I felt that I could actually bring something to the table that was non-existent at the time, and I believe I have done that. Now, today, the reason I'm running is because I'm not done yet. I didn't win until two thousand and fifteen, so I was kind of like behind times a slight bit. But, since I've been there, and in two thousand and sixteen taken office, I have had a lot of work to do. We've, I've gotten it done, I've moved forward, and, and the jail is a primary example of that. I campaigned on it two times, and I still have work to do. I believe that one of my projects in particular that I do want to build is I want to build a runway. That runway sitting out there at the Joseph Hardy Connellsville Airport is too short. And the reason it is too short is because you can't bring big jets in. But, my goal is to build that in steps. It's not one of these things that can be done quickly, and the reason for that is because it's too costly. But, I do believe that there are ways of making that happen, and I am going to work in the next four years. If you actually vote for me, you actually put me back in office, I will be working my tail off to make sure that I have a runway that sticks out there long enough so that we can have commercial, that we can have businesses. I've had several businesses talk to me over and over about a runway, and I know that that's going to attract, that, as we all know, if you have a long runway and you have capabilities of flying in and out of here, businesses are very much attracted to that. I believe it's in Clarksburg, West Virginia, where we, they had an airport similar to ours, and when they built the runway out, their economic growth come up, their population came up, their poverty rate went down, and their health went up. Everything about it was a positive. And I will tell you that in the next four years, that I will build it. One thing about me is I started with nineteen ninety-five. I'm very persistent, I don't quit easy, and I won't quit on this either. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohr. Commissioner Vasides.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What made you decide to run for Fayette County Commissioner? And what do you consider the biggest challenge of the position?
I decided to enter public service when my father died suddenly, and I know how much he cared about Fayette County, and his commitment to his community. And I couldn't think of any better way to honor him than to enter this profession. I was doing very well. I was Assistant Human Resource Director for Carlisle Hospital, but I decided to come back to Fayette County and, and continue his commitment and his legacy. That's how I got into the public service. And, when I started Fayette County, I mean, we had a lot of, a lot of catching up to do. We had no, our highways were deficient, we didn't have an expressway, now we do. We didn't have any infrastructureed business parks, now we have several, and we're expanding them. Now, we can compete economically against any other county and any other state. We have people working together with our economic development groups. The county has grown tremendously. Anybody that thinks that nothing's happened in the last thirty years must have their head in the sand. I mean, this is just unbelievable. Right now, I look around the county, there's more buildings going up. Drive around, look at those things. There's so much unprecedented growth right now. We have our problems, and I want to work on those problems in the next term. But, we've turned a corner economically, and Fayette County is respected. I can tell you, we're very well-respected on a regional level. You know, they've come, we had commissioners come down here a couple months ago to an SPC meeting, and they were very impressed with our tech park out near Penn State, and the facilities that Fayette Pen had, and all the things that we have going on. And I think Fayette County is on the right track. We have our problems, and we have to address them, and we will.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But, we're moving ahead.
Commissioner Dunn.
Don't start my time yet, because I did it on the way out. I'm going to start with the second part of your question, time management. I have about an eighty-hour work week, I work Saturdays, I work Sundays. Sometimes I'm working till midnight, sometimes I'm up at four-thirty, and my wife wants to kill me sometimes. So, other than that, why I wanted to be Fayette County Commissioner, you know, part of that was selfish. I want my kids to stay here. I want my kids to have a place where they can live, work, play, and raise their family, and keep my grandkids here. I don't have any grandkids yet, but, you know, my daughter already lives in St. Augustine, Florida. My, I have a son in, still in high school, and I have a son who works locally in Connellsville. So, that was my, my impetus to be a commissioner. I want to make Fayette County a place not only now for my family, but for your family, to have a great place to live, work, play, and to raise a family. To that end, I have, and to time management, I've held six agricultural roundtables to connect the politicians with the farmers here. I've held nonprofit and municipal grant workshops. I've held two Veterans Marathon events that have raised, privately raised twenty-eight thousand dollars for local veterans organizations. The next one will be November twelfth in Brownsville, if you're interested. I serve on the CCAP Emergency Preparedness and Veterans Affairs Committee. I serve on the NACO Human Services and Education Committee. I'm the Secretary of the National Conference of Republican County Officials. I don't stop, I won't stop, I need four more years, and I'm going to keep going for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunn. Finish us off, Mr. Gallo.
The primary reason I'm running is because of a little boy named Hayden. He's my grandson. He just turned ten. When I look at him, and I think, where are we going to be in ten more years? I thought I'd run for commissioner maybe when I retired, when I was sixty-five or something. Can't wait ten years. The reality is, we're on a trend here. We've got to turn it around. I want my grandson, both of them, I want them to stay here, or at least have that option. We've got food lines. We've got food lines in Connswell Community Ministries once a month, we got them here in Uniontown, the Fresh Fire Ministries. Do I want to see the airport get a new runway? Sure. But, I want to feed people first. We've an emergency, we've got to take care of people first. These people have been left behind. All these projects, new buildings and jobs, you're just shifting them around. There's no new growth, that's the reality. I mean, we can look at that, now, do I want growth? Sure. I don't want to do anything to stymie any of that growth. But, as a, out of the commissioner's office, we have to take care of the people of the county first. We need initiatives to take care of the people, and we can't leave the people behind. And that's what's happening. We fixed, we fixed the problem with the people, we addressed poverty, the other stuff will come. We have abundant resources here, close proximity to major metropolitan areas. We have a big power grid that comes right through the middle of the county that we can plug into. We have a lot of good stuff here. It's not being utilized because our people are suffering. We've ignored our people. We start taking care of our people, everything will come full circle for us. All the jobs that we start and create, they'll stay, they'll be sustainable. It's not sustainable, the model that we have now. The bomb's been falling out of everything, and as you lose more people, people can't keep a small mom-and-pop restaurant open. I mean, this is crazy. It's because we're not taking care of our people, the fundamental job of a commissioner. You know, and these, the leveraged spending on some of this stuff, it's not where it needs to be. I'm not against focusing a little bit on a runway expansion, but we got to feed people first. We've got to get people owning their own homes again. That's what has to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Now, each of our candidates will have two minutes to, for closing remarks. We will go in the opposite alphabetical order for closing remarks. So, Commissioner Vince Vasides, if you could get us started.
I'd like to thank the Chamber once again for this excellent forum. I think it's good for the voters to hear what we have to say. The next four years, you know, I'm going to continue to focus on the many county projects that are ongoing. Going to focus on spending down the rest of the ARPA money. We have to do that, or we're going to lose the money by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. It'll go back to the federal government. That's why we've had so much increased spending in the county, and that's the only reason, because we wanted to spend that money as effectively as we could for long-term growth and development. I want to continue to build the county business park expansion off of North Gate Highway. We had tremendous success on the other side of forty thousand jobs, forty-seven businesses, and a hundred and fifteen million dollars in private investment, and a million and a half in taxes. Everybody pays taxes there in that park. Complete the infrastructure that we're working on with Southern Fayette County, the mountain, North Union Township, worked and complete the Mon Fayette Expressway to Pittsburgh, reestablished the SPCA, building a building next to the prison, let prison workers work there, continue to implement the Infrastructure Bank, continue to expand fact transportation, public transportation, expand the county broadband to all residents, continue to expand the county recycling program, continue to build the Sheepskin Trail, build Route Twenty-One to Four lanes, working with the PennDOT officials. If I'm elected, I'll be chairman of SPC, and I will make sure Fayette County gets their fair share of the funding. And, if you have any other questions, view my website at www.vasides.org. I couldn't do this without the support of my family, my wife Kelly, my sons Joey and Nicholas, my stepdaughter Morgan, and my granddaughter, Isla Jo. My goal as a public official has been to make Fayette County the best place
Thank you, Commissioner Vasides.
...to work, live, and raise a family. And, with your help and support, I humbly will continue to build Fayette County's future. Thank you, and God bless.
Commissioner Lohr.
First off, thank you very much, Chamber, for hosting this, and also Penn State Fayette Campus. I mean, once again, they- I mean, once again, they've stepped up to the plate to give us a forum, they give us a place to actually have something to give you information on us. Once again, Vince, you know, when you're working together, when there's three people working together, there's so many things that when you get caught, and Scott, you won't have anything left, they... when we're speaking, usually it flows down where there's not a whole lot left. I agree with Vince. You know, the one thing about myself is that I, as I said earlier, I don't give up. I don't say no. No only means till tomorrow, okay? That's something I adopted in my business a long time ago. I would actually take and go into a business, cold-call the business, and drop a brochure off, and if they'd say no, that's okay, you'll see me next week, or you'll see me next month. I don't take no for an answer, I do not sit back and say, we'll wait and see if someone else will do it. I decide on my own to take a step forward to do this. That is one reason why in particular I talked about the airport runway. Yes, the airport runway is very, very important for economic growth, and if you look at South Union Township, you talk about taxes, if you look at South Union Township, South Union Township has not raised its taxes. Why? Because they grow economically, they build the buildings, they bring the people in, they have a good population growth. That is what this whole county can do if we do it right. I believe that I've actually been able to direct this county in a way of doing that, to make it right, to build the businesses, to bring a professional attitude to the courthouse. As you see, I am in a suit, this is my normal attire. Some people have seen me in a pair of grubby jeans and tennis shoes and a t-shirt, and they go, who are you? Well, this is who I am. I do not take no for an answer, I want to make sure that we bring businesses in here, I want to make sure that we build this economy, we build the infrastructure such as broadband. That Infrastructure Bank is vital to even broadband because of matching grants. If I'm talking fast, it's because that was coming. Thank you very much, everyone, you have a great evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohr. Mr. Gallo.
Well, thanks to Penn State and Devon and the Chamber for this opportunity. This is my first time seeking public office. I felt compelled to, and I told you the reasons why. I really believe that we have to have a more friendly government with more of a focus on the people. I think that the economic growth has been a lie. I'm not against it, but it just isn't happening. We desperately need to change the direction. We have to lift up our people. Our people, rising tide raises all ships. You can find out more about me at galloforfayette.org, and I can also be reached on Facebook, and I've got a lot of spots on WMBS. I'd also be remiss if I didn't bring to everyone's attention, there's another viable candidate running a writing campaign, his name's John Marietta. You can check him out at johnmarietta.org, find out what he's about. That's all. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. And we'll end with Commissioner Scott Dunn.
So I became Commissioner almost four years ago. Having lived here my entire life and have seen the downfall of Fayette County, I've seen us become... lose population, I've seen us lose industry, I've seen us lose housing and everything... I don't have to preach it to you guys, I've seen it. I've only had three years to help fix it. I need four more years to help fix it. I believe we are going in the right direction. The building out of broadband can't be stressed enough. If you don't have broadband, you cannot bring companies to your county, and that's fiber-optic broadband, and that's what we're doing. We've already, working with QCALL, applied for a $10 million grant. I will continue to apply for grants. Apparently, grants are a bad thing, but I will continue to apply for grants. We got grants, including $500,000 for a police training center, $400,000 for election department upgrades, $900,000 for the Fayette County Recycling Program, $1.2 million for the... to help with the airport upgrades, $170,000 for the Dunlap Creek Walking Trail. So, think about these things, these are things that we're trying to build our community, we're trying to build quality of life. The Sheepskin Trail, 1.2 million, with another 1.3 million in request. National Pike Water, 1.5 million, Albert Gallatin Water, 500,000, with another 750 on the way. Brownsville, downtown Brownsville, two projects totaling $1.5 million. North Union Sewage, a $6 million project that we helped leverage with $2.2 million of ARPA money. Those are the things that are happening in Fayette County, and those are the things that we do in the Commissioner's office. We're building a new Fayette County, and it's happening now...
Thank you, Commissioner.
...not just in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board and membership of the Fayette Chamber of Commerce, WMBS Radio, Fayette County Television, and Penn State Fayette, we'd like to thank you for attending this important event this evening. Our best voter is an educated voter, and your presence tonight makes a statement about your desire to see Fayette County grow. Special thanks to our candidates for your presence tonight, for understanding the importance of events such as these. Tonight's events have been aired on Fayette County Television and various social media pages, including WMBS Radio and the Fayette Chamber of Commerce. The event will be aired in its entirety on Fayette County Television and is available on their YouTube page. We would like to thank WMBS Radio, the Union Town Herald Standard, and the Connersville Courier for their assistance in promoting tonight's event. The Fayette Chamber of Commerce is the voice of the business community in Fayette County, over 600 businesses strong with a focus on building a brighter future through member advocacy and marketing, workforce development, and promoting all that is great about our beautiful county. Fayette County, a great place to live, work, and do business. Thank you all again, and remember, exercise your right to vote. Have a good evening.